Call this meeting in May 2nd, 2024, the Matters Committee to Order and for my public service announcement. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Do you guys want to?
Yeah, we're going to have a call to order, please, to open up the meeting.
Mark Pacheco, President.
Nicole Mallon, President.
Peter Cameron is present. Can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its change, foundation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need to make a motion to take the agenda out of order. Instead of doing three, we're going to do four first, and then let it to three.
I'd like to make a motion to put review, discuss, app, consensus to balance FY25 budget to take that either next.
I'll second that.
Motion being consecutive. Any discussion? Vote with your favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron's in there. Okay. You ready?
Yes, so just like when we met with the FinCom actually last week, and then the selectmen the night before. There were, and we did have sentiment on March. We knew that we've known that we've had a deficit. We have had options, and we have outlined what those options were to try to close and balance the FY25 budget. There have been different discussions between the selectmen and the FinCom about which of those options makes sense at this point. We have to, and it would be helpful really to have a consensus between the two groups on what effectively those options are, like based on where we are with timing, what dollar they will be in terms of how we balance. They would cheat. If we went just with the option to balance based on solid waste fees, there would also have to be, there'd have to be two warrant articles in the annual community warrant. Number one, based on what the recommendations have been from the Solid Waste Committee to be able to implement Hawa Cene discount. Plus, there'd have to be another article to accept the provisions of Section 28C F of Chapter 44 of the general laws that would basically allow the town to place liens if we were to go that route. Based on timing, however, and the fact that we really, based on everything on the education side that we found out Alec was really driving our deficit at the end of February, beginning of March. We've only had a few months to really broach the discussion on the implementation of any type of solid waste fee. We have had some concerns about it. And yeah, like I mean, like we just wanted to make sure that both moves have the opportunity to really weigh in and decide together about, oh, you know, whether it's additional cuts, whether it is solid waste fees, whether it's free cash, to try to have some alignment about how we're going to balance FY25 and have a balanced budget to lead to the town meeting, which also informs how we begin planning for FY26 as well. So that I think, that foundational thing, those type of foundational things and that type of consensus would then inform how we balance and how we also go into town meeting planning for capital as well. Because if we're using free cash to balance our operational budget, it's also going to impact how we are able or frankly not able to fund a lot of capital too. So that's that.
Thank you. Well, as I told the Finance Committee on Thursday night, the selectmen on Wednesday had no appetite to have a trash fee. You can't say that in person to a lot of people, but enough people to make me think that they just don't want, they'd rather pay tax than increase bag well as opposed to what's amounted to is another tax. The thing about trash bags is we're relatively low compared to other communities, and it can be controlled if we raise the price of the bags. Not substantially, but enough to cover a good part of the deficit. It would be, again, the end user who pays for it. As far as if you want to conserve your trash, you can use small bags and less frequent. So we would see the seniors getting the discount in that manner because they probably do a great job now at what they throw away just to keep their funds. But a dollar bag is a thing that we've heard thrown around, and I don't think that's unreasonable. I think even 75 cents is a good portion to fund the deficit in the budget. I don't know how the two of you feel other than what you said to me the other night about not having a tax, basically, on trash.
No, my feelings haven't changed, but I didn't hear about the 75 cents or a dollar bag.
That was another set we've thrown around at the Solid Waste Committee. Not in addition to the trash fee, but that's a possibility that we could do that.
To increase it.
To increase the trash bags per bag. Per bag. You guys had a figure the other night that you were using based on what Mr. Perry had said.
Right, so he was using 270 for large bag, $1.70 for small bag. And that increased the revenue to 400, 403,000. Still left a shortfall of 313,000. We asked them what the $3 large and $2 small would be to that recent additional $45,000. So we cut the deficit to 270,000.
The challenge with the bag fee at this point is it definitely helps with revenues, but just based on where we are at timing. It's a gift would be from a explaining to DOR about where the rationale for increasing that revenue. And also because we don't have any type of Board of Health vote on that yet either. Just in timing wise, nothing would preclude that from happening. And I actually think it would be healthy for that to happen to help revenues, the revenue collection in FY25. To plan on balancing the budget with that now, at this point, just like with just for the sheer equation now. Oh yeah, I mean, like I do think it would be hard to rationalize the DOR until once we realize our full year, all those updated revenues. So that will help in revenues, but I don't think we can balance based on that now. We could use that if it were implemented to help better balance in FY26, which would be great because we're all, I think I speak to everyone, just very concerned about 26. But if I think in the here and now, we wouldn't be able to plan on any additional revenues because there's a lot of hypotheticals to that discussion and to that equation right now.
I don't think we're going to get any opinion out of the Board of Health. I don't know if you guys are aware of, the downtown member, there's a little turmoil with the two members that are there. So I don't see any recommendation coming out of the Board of Health anytime soon. I like Mark Pacheco's idea of it being just a one-time free cash to balance the budget. I don't know where else we could come up to a cut. You know, we should remove these desks this way next time. It's going to be difficult to come up with any more cuts. And there being a miracle of the state giving us more money, it's, we're out of the past.
So just before we move on from trash, I know the consensus the other night from Finance Committee was that they felt that the shortfall in trash should be paid by the user as opposed to a fee as well. So an increase in the bag charge. And I guess, you know, a couple of things that we can add to that. When we talked about the hauler's fee, hauler's permit, implementing that that the 300 households that are, don't participate in this, are, the haulers are paying something.
Right.
I mean, it wouldn't be a hard thing, I wouldn't think, going forward to tie the bag cost to almost an automatic increase based on that department's cost increases. Costs go up 10%, bags have to go up 10%, make it an automatic. But again, nothing that we can do, nothing that you guys can do, but that the Board of Health maybe should consider.
What are your thoughts on, I think, I agree that, you know, I'm not opposed to a bag increase because everything is called an upgrade. So, and it's more geared towards, you know, how much usage you have if you're using the bags. And, you know, that kind of, those uses help helping to offset the cost. So I'm not opposed to it. I think it's, that's healthy and it's what it is. But I also have this other conflicting idea in my mind about, well, we hit a certain point of cost per trash bag. At some point, I feel consumers will switch to, instead of, you can only insert so much, you know, they might try to maybe dumping trash or, you know, like, do you guys have a feeling on that? Like, I don't mind raising it, but until what point, you know?
So I think the discussion was that, that their study said after over $4 or $5, that's when they really saw that the people would be leaving it on the side of the road.
Right.
And I think the studies from the towns' perspective, when we have had increases in the past, that the next year, there's been a drop in revenue, but then it picks up.
Right.
So.
We had that same discussion when it came to batteries and box springs.
Yeah, yeah.
And everybody's, oh, we're going to stop seeing them on the side of the road. It never happened. People just accept, they were reasonably informed that this is why, and it just happens. Do I see people dumping trash on the side of the road? No. They have too much pride in their community. Do I see them using maybe personal dumpsters or somebody else's neighbor possibly? But we're not talking any kind of increase like that. And I would be against an increase like that as well. But that, I mean, 10 years from now, who knows? But to give us the benefit in 2026, it makes sense to increase the bags in whatever it would benefit in the balance of 2025. As far as a hauler's fee for people who have dumpsters, there's not a lot. I'm not opposed to doing it. I just don't think there's going to be a lot of revenue coming from that because we're not talking thousands of people who have dumpsters in their yard. And for the few that might say, I'm going to now switch to a dumpster because the bags have gotten too costly. I think with the study we did for Solid Waste was, we're nowhere near that breaking point.
Yeah, you probably think, people better.
Right, people don't want them in their yard, which is a reason why they don't have them now. So everybody jumping ship to do a dumpster. And if there's a hauler's fee, then that would just get added to the price that you pay per month.
Yeah, like, and the other thing, like, I think we would want to look at, like, I think, you know, having some type of directive from this discussion, going back to solid waste first, I'd like one to make a recommendation to the Board of Health, and then a selectman on a fee, and then a hauler's fee. We'd also, I think, want to look at with regards to a hauler's fee, whether or not that would be a hauler's fee just for the residential trash or whether it would apply to businesses as well. Because what, because on the business side, basically, we all have businesses that are already paying, and thankfully, if you look at it as subsidizing a service that they don't even use. Because they, and we have, and we're at a very high increment on, like, on our split tax rate for businesses, they're already paying essentially to subsidize a lot of the, like, a lot of the trash costs already. And then to have a hauler's fee for businesses, then as we talk about attracting businesses to spread out the tax base, it really could be viewed as almost creating like a double whammy on businesses. You know, they're already paying in their taxes to help subsidize a trash program that they don't use. And now we would charge them over and above that to, or their hauler's like a fee to pick up their trash as well. So I think the Solid Waste Committee should also explore that in greater detail as well, just to make sure there's a balance there as well, so I.
Right, I'd agree to a certain extent. They also would pay taxes, pay for playbombs they don't use, schools they don't use. So paying for trash that they don't use is, how is that any different than something else? One of the things that, these trucks come down our roads to either empty their dumpsters or empty the dumpsters of the residents that have them. So shouldn't there be some kind of, shouldn't that be taken into consideration that there is some use in justification of having been paid a trash hauler's fee?
Yeah, no, wholeheartedly. Like, I'm just, you know, like, I'm always, I knew, has, like, I mean, like, I just, I think it would be impossible at this point just to say what to ask the Board of Health to make a recommendation just on bagging of hauler's fees without we have gone through the Solid Waste Committee very diligently over the last two months to get to this initial recommendation. Now, with the feedback we've heard, I think we kind of go back to the drawing board about how we work all the feedback in to an updated recommendation that now deals with bag fees and a hauler's fee as well.
Right, I don't want to get too cumbersome because the way we were talking about trash fees originally, there were ideas that, okay, if you had a dumpster, you could opt out. If you were over 65, you could get a discount. There was just going to be too many rules and regulations. And I'm glad it's kind of going away because you don't have all that added work. Some way just to input things into the computer. This way is kind of clean. You, this is what you pay for trash bags. And if you choose to conserve, then you can conserve your funds if you have a dumpster. And I know a lot of people's opinion is they're unsightly. They're on town property in some instances, as well as, again, they are trucks emptying them using the roads to do that. So it makes sense to me that there be some kind of hauler's fee with no senior discount, no 65 or older, or, and let the bag increase go through. I understand that we can't count on the revenue now, and we can't balance the budget with that revenue. But again, it will certainly help for apartments of 2025. So that at the fall meeting, we're not looking to fund anything out of free cash to help balance a foreseeable shortfall with the budget.
Can we jump on 26?
Yeah, that's our value.
So, I mean, even if we bring the large bag prices up to $3, we are still over $200,000 short on the trash, and this is a service. I mean, if people want to use it, we're going to pick up, we can't expect that out of budget. We're going to have $200,000 that has not been raised for, or has no engine to raise the money. If we've got trash, people are going to pay to get rid of it.
I agree. And if it was a revolving account, then it would have to be balanced. But because it's a service that we provide, it's a service that costs us money. Just to say, and to look at just trash, I think, is not wrong. I don't want to imply that at all. But the school doesn't balance with what we have to tax the people with either. The other things.
But education is mandatory.
Right, what would you, I'm sorry, we've got to sit down.
Well, I would suggest, in order to close this gap, we are going to have to not only raise bag fees, we are going to have to charge some sort of surcharge throughout the town in order for it to support itself.
No doubt. We can reduce the trash bags even more, which starts to get a little scary for the people to take all at one time. I just don't think now is the right time to try to balance trash. It is a future goal.
I guess I'm saying this opinion because I don't think we are going to do it just with bags. And I hope this comes through in this recommendation. I think we are going to need a combination of both. I don't think we'll have to go as high as 200,000 if we raise $200 per family in the scenario here. I don't think we'll have to go that high if the increase in bags does come in somewhat higher than the reported almost 450,000 with the increase.
Right.
Could I weigh in on this? So I feel, this kind of goes back to what I said at that meeting. We're trying to go from, I feel like we're going at 30, we're trying to go right to 100. So before you can run, you gotta crawl, and before you, well, you gotta walk, and then before that, you crawl, you know? So we're just trying to kind of sprint, you know? I feel, you know, these things have to go incrementally. So if we raise the bags to a certain point, like, maybe one thing I like from the Solid Waste Committee is, what percentage of, for solid waste can bags fund? Is it 50%, you know? And, you know, so we have those numbers, you know? Like, if we're always going to raise bags to be 50% or whatever it is, you know? Like, that's, that's part of it. And I do go back to my other comments on the debt exclusion. I think that will guide the discussions because it is a service, and like you said, it's not mandatory. So if it's something we can't afford, I think the debt exclusion will tell us in the future if we can't afford it. One of the numbers I got, and I know it's all projections, is what would that deficit be, you know? What would the deficit be, you know, next year, even with the debt exclusion, if it were to pass? And it's about $100,000, I believe, right? And what increases in trash, and it's just an estimate.
No, if, like, if we didn't, if we didn't do any, if we only had a debt exclusion, like, and didn't do anything else, we would, yeah, we would still be in the negative about, probably just shy of $100,000.
Thank you. So that kind of goes back to my point. We're moving in the right direction. We put a band-aid on this year with free cash, and it's not ideal. But as I said at our selectmen's meeting, it's in my mind, and I'm not a municipal finance expert. It's a sign of an unhealthy economy and unhealthy balance sheet. And we know that, and we're acknowledging it, and we're tightening up where we can. Let's say optimistically, the debt exclusion passes. We're trending in the right direction. Now our deficit's $100,000. And we're still offering the service of trash if we didn't do anything else. So we're moving in the right, we're not going up, we're going in the right direction, you know? And when you factor in all these other things like inflation and the times that we're in, I think, I don't disagree, I just think it's, let the debt exclusion guide us. That will tell us our financial picture of the town, you know? The townspeople kind of speak based on that. That's my opinion.
$3 and $2, we covered 63% of the curve.
That's pretty good.
Good.
It's getting better, incremental.
Yeah, if it's for a snapshot, then remember what we talked about before? About adding the two types of bags? And I'm not saying, I mean, maybe you can make them both work, but a bag specific for trash and a bag specific for recycling. And that way, you're giving them the choice of how they want to do things. It's putting it more on, the onus more on them. And I think you can reach a little bit more of a revenue stream using another source, you know? And it's nothing new, it's just another bag.
Of course, I was raised at the last meeting, whether or not you could do, put recyclers into a bag as well. Get more sure.
Okay.
We're going to look into that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What the problem is now is free recycling isn't free. So, you know, for years and years, what we've done is we've said, everything that goes in here, we can put it out of the curve for free. And what goes in the bag is what we're paying bags for. But that was when, on the backend, that Solid Waste could get a kickback or a refund for the cardboard, the cans, the plastic. They don't get that anymore. So if we're not paying for it the way we pay for the other trash, by having maybe an orange bag and a clear bag, then we're never going to be able to balance this the way we used to.
Well, of course, it's more than recycle.
It's more than just all trash.
Right.
I like that market, yeah, but it makes sense if we can do that.
I think they were going to look into it, Solid Waste was going to. Kevin, did you have a question?
I just wanted, yeah, actually, I wanted to brought that up because we were going back and forth about, you can't put recycling in a plastic bag. A perfect solution for that, a recommendation for Solid Waste, the Wannan leaf bag. A brown paper bag stamped with a name and seal, sell that for whatever. More on the whole big picture though, because like the Board of Selectmen does oversee both the Board of Health and the Solid Waste Committee. I would highly recommend that you guys go through and do a public hearing about this and weigh up and give the options, though. Because like even if bag, if bag, bag for five bucks a piece starts paying $10 a week, that's 520 bucks for the year, it's still half of what a private hauler costs. I think half of it is we're only getting little tidbits of the information in a lot of these discussions. So a good explanation to the people in that public hearing setting would go a long ways. So you don't, you know, you know, if you implemented this fee tomorrow, next Wednesday, you'd have a mob show up and ask you why you're raising bags. So I think, you know, the public education portion of this, just let them know, we need to do this to bridge the gap. But it's also a far, you know, less expensive option for you would go a long ways. Hate to see a conversation just happen here and not invite a broader audience.
And no attraction to how much they need?
Exactly.
Right. Yeah, but like, we'll leave it in your hands. But that's just a suggestion to kind of, a little self-protection.
I like, I like the paper bag because then we don't have the discussion of do we have to separate it, right? That paper bag just goes right in.
No problem.
Paper is just included with other.
Right, yeah, I mean, there's nothing that's perfect, but it's like, you know, better than the plastic bag. Where it's kind of home with.
There is a cost to make those bags paper, plastic.
Yeah, totally.
Paper programs.
Okay. From our standpoint, if the, if the Board of Selectmen are not moving forward with a fee, there's nothing for us to talk about.
Right.
So, that's that.
You guys agree on the fee?
But have we been forward with an inclusion bag prices? No.
Yeah, it is the Board of Health.
So we've recommended that the Board of, that a discussion we had with the Board of Health on that,
and then it'll be in the Board of Health's hands to do that.
Just want to make sure you're against the fee, correct?
Yes, yeah, I, I see the message.
Lots from Trash Talk.
But we can stay in the Board of Health?
Sure.
How about Slough and Mellow?
Yes.
Yes, yes, and I know at my last, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, I said something along the lines of, well, a lot of other communities have fees or you have to bring them to the transfer station or whatnot. But after talking to residents, they made a good point. Well, I chose Dayton, I like Dayton because I have this service. This is why I haven't picked these other communities. So not to say down the line that this doesn't have to happen, but I just don't think now's the time.
10 years from now, we may not be able to get rid of trash.
Yeah.
Then we can go back to our incinerator.
Yeah. From our standpoint, it would be helpful to have a Board of Health recommendation from the Board of Selectmen, because we might reconsider that.
Sure.
I know this, you know, disposal contract's coming up, the CMAS coming up. Now we have this other trash issue compounded. I feel like it would be good to kind of have a joint meeting, you know? I don't know if it's just with the Board of Health, but there's, seems like a lot of that. Ultimately, I got to come back to us, so I think we need to talk with them and pass some of the stuff on.
There is talk about having a joint meeting, even including Solid Waste Committee. Unfortunately, like I had said earlier, the Board of Health is not in shape to do that right now. Month now, I'd be the better.
Uh, months now might be the better, but, um, certainly not before, tell me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Jim, my one concern is I believe our, um, Board's contracts, I'm a little off topic, but I believe it's June thirty?
Yes.
So a month from now, we're gonna be thirty days away?
No, Board's contract expires the end of FY twenty-five.
Yeah, next year.
The end of twenty-five?
Yeah, the end of twenty-five, yes, both.
You're gonna see bands too?
Yes, one more year on both. Um, but the, the challenge is that we'll probably get to it in a minute, uh, when we get back to the, um, uh, the waste budget, is even though we have a CMAS contract, um, we, um, there has been a question about, uh, what their rates in accordance with that contract is going to be for FY twenty-five. And so we did, um, actually last evening get back from the, from the Board of Health, um, and they're recommending an increase in those, in those fees, like in four thirty-three, um, add a, add a cost increase, increase projection, uh, that between five and ten percent for FY twenty-five, which is not included in the budget right now, that we do have to discuss tonight. As well, I can need recommendations from, uh, some of those groups as well. At the time of what you did mention, just a minute ago, hoping to start with FY, no, I'm sorry. Um, our, our budget, five, ten in the Board of Health budget?
If, if the Board of Selectmen would rather do four thirty-three first, that's, that's fine with us. Either way.
So. We want that for four thirty-three?
Sure.
Okay.
So, um, specifically, uh, the two, are the two lines that, uh, we would have to increase would be, um, hold on a second. I would, I would be fifty-two ninety-four and I can fifty-three oh three. Um, one is currently, um, uh, level funded, uh, from FY twenty-four at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's fifty-two ninety-four. Um, and then fifty-three oh three is level funded at a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, based on the information, uh, we received last night from the Board of Health and the Health Director, um, they did get information back, yeah, um, that would project, uh, the increase in those costs between five and ten percent. Alec, what do you mean again, when we're talking about sustainability? Uh, we only through our levy have the ability to increase by two and a half percent. Alec, and we have, we do have very limited new revenues. So these are the unsustainable cost drivers, just with the five and ten percent that we're seeing, uh, which is making it, uh, which is making it more and more difficult to balance.
Did, um, was there any backup with it? Like, was it from the vendor? Was it from the CMAS vendor?
No.
No.
That was just.
Uh, Alec, it was just that, what, um, uh, the Board of Health had heard from, uh, from, from professionals in the industry.
Well, the department head is the one that answered the email, the Board of Health chairman, so I haven't heard that from.
Yeah, from, from, I guess.
Okay. Professionals in the, I don't know, so this is important for us to, wow.
I.
Yeah.
This is important.
No, I, I understand completely. So if we went over the ten percent to, to just in terms of covering all any expenses incurred, um, if we went for the ten percent, the hundred and fifty increases to one sixty-five, and then the one oh five increases to one fifteen in those lines, at ten percent.
So we have a Board of Selectmen recommends line, but we didn't recommend it in that meeting.
For four thirty-three, you did, you did not for five ten.
Okay, thank you. That, that makes it easier, that's good. It's hard to make a decision like this, we're just, there's no one to ask, there's no backup. There's an email that we got right before our meeting. I just have a hard time raising folks taxes with, uh, no subject matter expert, no one from the board, no one, no one here with any, um, I, I have a hard time making any decisions on something like this. We've, we've done our work, we've made our recommendations. It would, I would hate to have a budget shortfall as a result of not making one, um, I just.
When you say you have a hard time making the decision, you have a hard time suggesting that we increase it? Or a hard time just coming up with it?
I have a hard time making any changes to the budget.
Okay, I understand.
I, I don't want us to have a shortfall either, it's just, I feel like I have no one to ask. This is tough, I, I, I just don't have any, any material to look at.
This guy from Jamaica?
Yeah.
He's pretty reasonable with his homework. Well, we can't know if we have a budget shortfall.
Have these from FY twenty-two? Alec, it was actually funded at, uh, uh, one thirty-five?
Sweet, do you know where we are now on that, on that fifty-two ninety-four?
Yeah. Um, I have through the end of March.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Alright, so through the end of March, on the five-two-nine-four out of a hundred and fifty, they've spent ninety-four thousand seven hundred and sixty. But that is off, they usually run off a month, so they're usually like a month behind.
So that would be through March then?
Through February.
Well, technically it'd be through February, bill, February's bill.
Fifty-three oh three?
Oh, sorry, fifty-three oh three, out of the one oh five, they've spent eighty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-three.
Uh, could you repeat that one?
Fifty-three thou, sure, fifty-three thousand?
Yep.
Eight hundred and forty-eight.
Yep, thank you.
Safe there, that'd be no problem. Can I imagine that through season?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Yeah, the trends are there, the speed to an increase, yeah.
Knowing Jim and the homework that he does, um, I know what Mark is saying, not having him here. Uh, I don't know how much more, uh, of an opinion that he would have other than what he said in his email. I, I say increase it.
Serena, did you say fifty-three for fifty-three oh three or fifty-three?
For fifty-three oh three? Fifty-three eight forty-eight.
Fifty-three thousand.
Yes, fifty-three thousand.
And then for the fifty-two ninety-four, it was what?
Ninety-four thousand seven hundred and sixty.
Thank you.
So, so based on eight months, fifty-two ninety-four is annualizing to about a hundred and forty-two. And fifty-three oh three is annualizing to about ninety. So we still could eat a ten percent increase in those numbers.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So a ten percent increase in five-two ninety-four would be a hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred?
Yeah.
And, um,
And really fifty-three oh three would be ninety thousand. Conceivably, increase fifty-two ninety-four at one fifty-seven. Increase fifty-three oh three to even ninety-five. Save three, three thousand. Be a little over ten percent increase based on being unannualized.
So that would actually go down?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, fifty-two ninety-four would go up by seven, and then fifty-three oh three would go down.
Yeah.
Ten?
Yeah.
It's a ninety-five, Peter?
Yeah. That's music to my ears.
And then there'd be a net three thousand dollar savings.
Savings.
Yeah.
When did they get the bill for June in July?
Thank you.
So it gets paid in July, so.
We encumber the funds because it goes by the service date.
Okay. Yeah.
Sorry, did make Jim aware of that when we stopped in the office the other day to make sure they encumber the, those last month bills.
Yeah.
So with the cost, we're saying they're gonna go up, and it almost sounds like what, what's here, it might be just safer just to leave it? And give them some wiggle room?
Yeah.
Um, it sounds like we did the basic math and, um, this, that three thousand dollar wiggle room with the ten percent increase, I, I, with trash being a constant subject of discussion, I, I like them having a little bit of wiggle room.
That makes a lot of sense.
Mm-hmm.
This is two fifty-five, a ten percent increase on the annualized eight month numbers is two forty-five, so. Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Are we good with four thirty-three then? Because like at that point, the Board of, uh, Selectman recommendation wouldn't have to change.
Alright, so I just want to confirm that, right?
Yeah, I won't make a motion to change it. Unless you want to make it more in line with those numbers that we just came up with.
Um, what's up, uh, did you have an opinion?
I think we should leave it the way that it is.
Leave it the way it is, okay, so leave it the way it is?
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, there is one question that might apply to you guys, um.
Yeah.
Well, number fifty-three hundred, we're looking at an increase from thirteen thousand fifty dollars up to twenty thousand. Why are the monitor testing wells having such a drastic jump in one year?
Because we added additional wells that hadn't been tested before. Uh, specifically a, um, um, uh, okay, I'm sorry, we do testing at the, um, at the old, at the old plant, plant fell off of Hot Street now, that, I don't think that, that hadn't been done before. We were out of the plans.
So is that much of an increase for one well?
Yes.
Is it one? One? Or multiple?
Alec, exactly, one, uh, Alec, it's one ore, it's one ore then for the monitor.
Multiple wells.
Yeah, it's, so yeah, we did, uh, we did get a, uh, we did get a cost proposal from an engineer, and so the twenty thousand dollars is based on that.
I want to thank you, you always have the answer, I appreciate that.
Fine.
That's pretty amazing.
I think the, um, the only other thing that we need from you guys would be sent out on five-ten. The Board of Health budget.
Um, Jim also did comment on that, that it was on the agenda for their last Board of Health meeting, but nobody has come in to actually sign it. And I meant to make sure it was on the last agenda, but I did not have a chance. So it sounds like they approved it at their last Board of Health meeting, I just didn't verify.
Approved what?
Their budget.
I have no problem making a motion to recommend their budget to be a team player once they, we either have a joint meeting with them, I, we have meeting minutes, let's say they had a public meeting where they talked their, about their agenda, or they signed their budget. But I just can't make a motion until one of those things happen. So it sounds like they, they're about there, you know, but I just tonight, uh, we don't have anything and no communication from the board and, um, just to the selectmen, I don't know if I said it, communicated to you, but I go back to my principle that, uh, the Board of Selectman recommendation needs something. And, uh, I feel like for, for it to mean something, you know, we have deadlines and, uh, they have to work with our city board committee. And if you, you know, there was clear guidelines, and, but I, I do want to work with them because we need to move forward, but, um,
Yeah, so.
tonight.
We're trying, yeah, so, like, it's, it's tonight, like, we're seriously running out of time.
Oh, we don't need a Board of Selectman recommendation.
So that's my, so I, that's what I was gonna say, if, tonight's the final decision, you know, the operating budget. If the selectmen are not gonna have a recommendation on that, then it'll just go to the warrant that way.
That's my feeling.
Because, yeah, today's the day.
Kevin, question for you.
We'll go to the end of the second night.
Since you are the new, new buyer.
Oh, you didn't go, right, so.
Process-wise, in the past, we've been able to reduce a number on the floor, but not increase a number on the floor, is that how you see things as well?
Yeah, I, I feel like we're gonna stick with how we normally don't think.
So. Yeah, so as an, just as an example, if, if it were one, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand was the department amount, and a motion was made for a hundred and fifty thousand, that's, we're good.
Yeah, so I mean, as long as somebody's gonna back up that recommendation, so it's up since then, it'll be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like, oh, sorry.
Not, not two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I can, I mean, like, typically on the, I, on the, I, on the financial articles, the recommendation comes from the FinCon anyways.
Yeah.
So as long as the FinCon, um, the both, both recommendations will be in the budget, I mean, in the one, and as long as the FinCon makes the recommendation, Alec, there may be questions about how the one recommendation or the other, but like as long as, as long as the recommendation comes based on the FinCon recommendation, which it always does anyways, um, I, yeah, it should be pretty straightforward that way.
I would say my only other preference would that it would come in the form of an amendment and not just a recommendation on the floor.
Okay.
What type of amendment, Kevin?
It would be amended, because the art, the article's gonna be printed a certain way. So esent, essentially you would be amending that article.
No, no, because, because the recommendation comes on the FinCon recommendation anyways. So then if the FinCon makes the motion that's based on their recommendation anyways, the, the FinCon motion will be based on their recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, because they'll leave a three in there, will be recommend they are.
Okay, no, that makes sense, thank you.
Uh, I guess my only question regarding that then would be, within the warrant, it's gonna, there will be an opportunity for someone to look at, well, the Board of Selectmen recommended a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars less than Finance Committee, so.
Intend the total spending.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we motion on the floor to.
We would have to justify why we didn't support it.
Yeah, and hope nobody jumps there.
Yeah.
You guys aren't really trying to make it fun. Well, again, in that, in that instance, just to talk about the logistics of the meeting is, if somebody did jump it, you would still absolutely be able to amend, you would be able to amend and back it up. You know, so take advantage of that opportunity if needed, based on your committee's recommendation.
Okay. Guys, have any else on that? Nothing on, on the Board of Health. Not that I'm on the board of health, see, but that like.
Okay.
Um, I do have one more question regarding, uh, possible I think we 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 you were at the last meeting, but we talked about some cuts, roughly forty-two thousand dollars in cuts.
Correct.
Um, I did have another question that I have brought up to the finance committee also just.
Okay. What do you want here, do you have for everyone?
Not mine.
Uh, I know that we do, we have as a town at least one open position coming into the year. That would be a possible savings if we left that position open.
Okay.
And it's my guess that the savings would be between eighty and a hundred thousand. So conceivably half of what we need.
Okay.
It would be, uh, the unfilled police officer.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I know you guys.
We've talked about that.
Okay.
Um, I mean, there's a lot in overtime being paid.
Yep.
Uh, so we have to look at, I don't think we're gonna stay paying two thousand. There would be some savings because there's no health benefits and
Right.
uh, all that self costs that go with it, um. But yes, we have talked about uh, not filling that position in the union that obviously wants to fill.
Yeah.
But, um, no decision was made on, on the the selectmen's side, um.
Question, were there two police officers out on a sick leave or something, injury, whatever.
Yeah. Leave, yeah. Injury, yeah.
Do we have a tagged one when they come back?
Uh, one, no, uh, and one, I think it was the end of April, right?
Yeah, that was just extended, so it's 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 up in the air right now. Uh, which is why the impact on the over, on the overtime is, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's been that, uh, overtime as well as again being dominant off here.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so basically all three of those things are very much interrelated as well, which makes it even more challenging.
Um, I talked to the, uh, the chief and and he thinks they think that they need the position filled, um. Whether or not, we we had a hiring freeze except for the police and fire, and then we 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 released that hiring freeze, um. I don't know, I I don't know, uh, how desperately they they need the position filled.
I got to meet with the police department, um, maybe three weeks ago now, and I got to hear about all the projects that they're doing, they're doing, um, boat patrols on the Ton River, they got bicycles, they're gonna be doing more community policing, um. You know, they're doing more community outreach and they've gone some things for branding, um, and I'm excited to see the force continue to expand on those things and you know, one of the comments I did get was the department had a lot of change and they had increased overtime and a lot of the guys are working more and those things having to fill those shifts takes away from the community policing and I'm excited to see the officers on holiday, be around, you know, kids, uh, you know, feeling safe and you know, they support us on so many different, um, community events that we do, so I, you know, my opinion is if the chief says he wants it, then the chief knows the financial situation that we're in. Um, and I think he wouldn't take that lightly. So if the chief says he needs a police officer, knowing how hard we're working to balance the budget, uh, then I'm excited to support it, to support that.
Okay, you have it?
I'm just, I'm never a fan of cutting public compensation.
Okay.
Um, but I understand, um.
Well, the savings wouldn't be eight two thousand, um, because it, uh, there's self costs involved as well as subtracting the overtime, so I mean, it wouldn't be too much less, but it would certainly be less than, um, than a full additional police officer. But I have to agree with my two colleagues, I I think they need to uh, the overtime is a little stressful, is what we've heard. Some, they don't appreciate it on occasion, but to always have it is, um, sometimes destructive.
And that's, that's fine, we'll, we won't look at that as an option then for replacement, I guess that's just lead back into twenty-six. The, we're spending two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand of free cash this year that we won't have next year.
Yes.
Maybe more than one police officer, that would be like, uh, we're talking about it.
So in other positions in town, if we have retirements, et cetera, are we, um, I know there's a librarian retiring, are we replacing those positions?
Well, in January, the new library is supposed to be open. And one of the things when they decided to have two separate libraries, they had to hire a position that was justified hiring one person. And I'm gonna stick to my guns because.
And not refill?
Not refill it, because their argument was, we need this extra position
Because of two.
because of the two locations, but they supposedly not going to need that position. Now, I know they're gonna come in and try to justify that because that happens a lot, um, but.
We've got to say no to something.
Right.
Um, what did you say, the I heard is opening?
They said in January.
January?
Yes, sir.
So the two locations permanent?
No.
Oh.
Okay.
It's all gonna be one location.
Okay.
They moved it over, it should be open.
Right, so we don't need to, uh, the we don't need to replace that person.
Right.
No, that's what he just, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, as far as who's the element's retiring, um.
Right, great.
Right, yeah, but some of us is retiring.
Yeah, there's a potential, and there is a potential for another retirement, but that's not official yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would that be a position that would be replaced?
Frida, like, I think at that point, we'd really have to meet with the library overseas, um, here.
Oh, there's also another position in the library?
Yeah, potentially, yes.
A potential, okay.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
No, but, uh, uh, yeah, I think your point out, uh, so any, any vacancy from here on out has to be really assessed and evaluated, uh, and whether or not we, because I mean, I mean, frankly, we don't want to, uh, backfill a position only to need to lay them off in twenty-six, that's not fair to anybody.
Right, it just brings our unemployment conversation up.
Yeah, precisely, yeah.
Alright, we'll start going through, uh, recommendations, if you can, on everything else.
Yes. Yeah.
I just have something, I was hoping to discuss overall how we're gonna balance the levy limit, um, based on the additional proposed targeted amounts that we had, we ran out of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So I was hoping to get a consensus, which is sounding like we're gonna use free cash, um, to cover that shortfall, but um, as I said at the last incoming meeting, which I don't think you guys were present, when I had to close the books and do the recap, DOR itself comes up with its own calculations for overlay and other items that I don't know is gonna change from our projection until I hit the button. So I'm hoping to have at least, um, you know, thirty to forty thousand dollars above our levy limit just to account for anything that the Department of Revenue is gonna change you know, last minute in September when I'm closing the books. Um, so I don't know if the board of selectmen are gonna stay for all of the rest for FinCom and then at the very end decide exactly the amount that we're gonna need, cause I'm hoping to do it in live time. Or, um, if the board of selectmen wanted to just do a motion in a vote to use whatever we need for free cash plus forty thousand to bring us to a positive forty thousand levy limit.
Is that your recommendation?
That is my recommendation, forty thousand, yes.
I put that in motion. Sure, okay, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to pay the uh, the deficit that we have for free cash and to pay an additional forty thousand for any other items that we would need, um, per the DOR.
Second that.
Motion made, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen's an aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Great, so that, just to clarify, we're with the one-time free cash items projected to be spent, we're, free cash right now would be at roughly five hundred.
Um, so
Oh, no.
One second, what is it, seven twelve?
No, seven twelve.
Minus two sixty-five-ish. Four hundred and, four hundred and forty-seven thousand broadly would be remaining.
Well, we need forty-seven?
Yes, would be remaining to use for articles.
And that two twenty-five doesn't include the items we discussed last week.
Correct. Right, so, right, so the finance committee came up with additional forty thousand in cuts. So, uh, you know, if that ends up being the recommendation today.
So we're at two twenty-five.
Um,
Yeah.
as long as that's what passes at.
There's, there's your forty.
Yeah, there's the forty, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I'm not sure if I follow, but if if we're saying that two twenty-five covers it, but we want an extra forty in case of what the DOR proposes, why can't we go with the two twenty-five and then we can do a special meeting after if in fact, and when we know what amount it is, maybe it's thirty-five.
It would actually be too late at that point. Cause then it would be.
We have a supplemental.
Maybe the full meeting, if you're you're talking that way, but all the war, all the information for the warrant has to be in.
Not even that, so this is for the year-end.
Close the.
Labor work that goes up to the state. So if they adjust the numbers, then we fail.
Why is it saying they're gonna give us money?
No.
They may say we owe.
We.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when I closed the books last year, um, I had an overlay amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand and then DOR itself said I needed a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So that was, you know, just three thousand that I wasn't expecting to get eaten up in our levy limit. And so I actually closed the books and DOR came up with their own calculation. So it's basically out of my control.
But then the call, you should come back and and do the.
No, it's too late by that point.
Okay. I don't understand, but if that's the way it is, that's the way.
So the levy limit has to do with property
Property values.
values and all that.
Yeah.
And we can only, our budget can only be so, a certain percentage of the levy limit. Am I correct?
Yeah, it has to be. Yeah.
So that's why we need that number now.
Okay.
I have a question for the finance committee, um, do you guys, when do you guys make recommendations on, uh, like capital stabilization accounts or stabilization accounts, is that, is that tonight too, if you guys want to count?
Next week.
It's next week, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, like, just to be clear, I mean, with only four hundred generating seventy thousand dollars, our ability, um, to do all the things we uh, with capital stabilization, with funding Main Street, uh, and anything else we need to do is uh, is gonna be much more complex right now, so we just have to respect that.
What's the, um, account that has, like, for our capital outlet committee that they look at, what's that called?
Uh, uh, we have two stabilization accounts, we have one that's, um, has a balance of just over, um, is that me right?
No, I think that, okay.
Okay, um, uh, it's all, it's, it's, that's nearly two million dollars, just over one point nine million.
Yeah.
Um, then our capital stabilization, um, which we've been working to uh, which we've been working to set aside based on where we are and, uh, in the school feasibility study process, um, and entertaining that, um, that has just over one point five million dollars in it.
Thank you. So my thoughts, just going, while we do talk about that, just for us to sleep on is, I hope to put a little bit more money aside for projects such as future Main Streets and future, you know, MSBA projects coming, so I hope we can I know there's a lot on, on the warrants and a lot of requests from departments, but I hope we can continue to put in stabilization, like we have in the past. Something, you know, I gotta cut up, you know, um, a bit of something, then, but shortening stabilization. Just something for about that side, maybe.
Yeah, like, like, yeah, we don't have much and, no, there have been some things that have been
That makes sense.
pushed aside the last couple of years, cruiser and I mean, highways using, uh, using some of the antiques. At this point, trucks that are thirty years old.
Yeah.
Uh, we do also, like, we're gonna, I also on the warrant, that's not like a capital item, but we have to save space for it as well. Um, it's based on the, um, based on the, based on the, um, other thing relative to Forest Hills, um, with Concom, um, we now have to fund that at Prince as well, so um, that will be an additional warrant article that we, um, I like, I originally, the request was thirty thousand dollars, um, we, um, as everyone probably remembers, last year because of the planning board appeal on the same item, on the same, um, uh, on the planning board side of the application, um, we, um, gave a fifty thousand dollar appropriation for that legal. Um, only a thousand dollars have been expended so far, so maybe we start smaller than the thirty uh, there, just based on how that other, um, how that other, uh, legal timing has happened with the ability to add more as we go there too, so those a lot of things, now that we know where we are, I can, what we have to use free cash, um, for it to be able to balance operational, now, uh, over the next few days, we're gonna be able to look at and try to reconcile, uh, uh, which capital items, which things like the Concom legal for for our sales, uh, we absolutely need to do. Uh, and then we'll be back for recommendations next week to, to possibly this as well.
Couldn't that, this is covered out of the remaining forty-nine thousand, for the fifty thousand that was already appropriated, so Concom couldn't.
Cause that, uh, that warrant article is specifically for the planning board, I can, we do uh, we do expect those costs will be incurred, um, by the planning board based on, based on that uh, current appeal on the planning board side, so it's uh, yeah, they're running everywhere, I'll pay now, I'll pay later, um, and we're trying to.
But the DI industry is already, um, did they already file a motion?
With the Concom?
Yes.
Yes.
And what about with planning board, we've already spent a thousand, is that finished or?
Yes. Oh, no, that just has to be very beginning, that has a ways, ways, ways to go.
Money motion.
So, do you, you guys need to adjourn your meeting?
Uh, are you staying?
No.
Okay, um, then we'll adjourn. Oh, is your motion.
Then we'll adjourn.
Second adjournment?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Peter Karen's an aye.
Thank you guys, you're hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, made time.
So now it's over to depart, electorally departments.
Good night, you guys.
And thank you.
Bye, good night.
Good night.
I'll try and make this as quick as possible.
There is a heartbeat.
Yeah. Yeah, that was good. Uh, so I I've got a group departments, but if someone wants to jump in with specific department, just uh, just mention it and we'll, we'll stop.
Okay.
Um, so start one thirteen, one fourteen, one twenty-two.
Uh, one.
Okay, do you mind just doing one by one, cause if I'm gonna do it in real time, like, it's like that fast.
Uh, so the ones, when I'm doing it in a group.
Okay.
Um, oh, okay, now, cause you need to type from, type along.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the total, so it won't be long.
Okay. Uh, one thirteen. The administrator and board of selectmen recommend thirty-eight hundred, but that is for us. Second.
No, I make a motion, we accept the, uh, department one thirteen.
The thirty-eight hundred?
The thirty-eight hundred, thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, votes, you guys have it? Uh, one fourteen.
You didn't wanna stay at here his salary? People just said five hundred.
I make a motion, we hope to accept the moderator request of five hundred dollars for department one fourteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, votes, I have it. Um, one twenty-two.
Are we done with the secretary, um, contracts? There were just a couple of changes and then some that.
That has been zeroed out, um, fifty-one sixteen has been zeroed out, and FY twenty?
No, I know what she's talking about, but so when the original budget, they only budgeted for fifty-two weeks, but FY twenty-five is fifty-two point two.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so that was, there was a little difference in the, yeah, one, so, yeah.
So they. A little for, for that one, so.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
That was it for me.
Uh, we're good.
Uh, kind administrator would be us, recommendations one.
Uh, town administrator and B O S recommendation, one ninety one seven forty three eighty six. Any questions on those, on that department?
Nope.
Take a motion to.
Oh, I make a motion, um, we vote to accept the uh proposed budgets for Department one twenty four. And one hundred seventy six.
One twenty two.
Oops, sorry. I make a motion, we vote to accept the proposed budget uh for Department one twenty two, board of selectmen, at a total of one hundred three thousand four hundred fifty eight dollars and eighty six cents.
No.
Oh, wrong one, you're going down. At a total of one hundred ninety one thousand seven hundred forty three dollars and eighty six cents.
Yeah, second. All in favor, that's something else.
Aye.
Those.
Yeah, the first one.
Yeah, take the first.
Uh, one twenty four, same, that the there was a reduction from the first uh first round. The administrator and the board of selectmen, uh, recommending one ninety one, five twelve seventy seven for one twenty four. Any questions on those?
No.
No, take a motion.
I make a motion, we vote to uh recommend the uh proposed budget of one hundred ninety one thousand five hundred twelve dollars and seventy seven cents for Department one twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes. Yes, have it. Uh, one thirty one. Uh, no, no change from last year, except the catch, uh, reduce start travel. Uh, so thirty nine fifty.
And we're gonna do some subscriptions, what do we?
Uh, and I'm asking that.
Okay, okay, okay.
Any questions on?
What are these salaries?
So once that meeting is over, you will get a check for about three hundred eighty dollars.
Really?
Yeah.
I had no idea.
You guys can or not send it to me, I wouldn't know. Make sure to write.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend the budget for Department one thirty one in the amount of three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes, yes, have it. Uh, one thirty two, we had discussed at the last meeting, uh, that it started, this had been at fifty five, fifty thousand, last year bumped up to fifty five. And whether with the current conditions, whether we need to bump pretty back down to fifty.
I thought we had it, yeah.
Okay, so this was the official, yeah.
I would like to see. Yeah, I would like to see him kind of five thousand there.
So I would take that in the motion.
I'll make a motion that we vote to um make a recommendation of fifty thousand dollars uh for the budget for Department one thirty two, the reserve fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes, yes, have it. Uh, one thirty five, same here, um, no changes. Administrator and board of selectmen recommending one seventy five, five eighty, one fifty.
That's on one thirty five?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions on any of those?
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department one thirty five, an amount of one hundred seventy five thousand five hundred eighty one dollars and fifty cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Votes, yes, have it. One forty one. Uh, the board of selectmen and the administrator recommend.
Or assessors.
Yeah, yeah, board assessors, recommending two twenty, four forty, one sixty nine. There was a question that I had, uh, she mentioned that she thought we could possibly cut eighteen hundred better from that, but uh came back and said that that was not the case, so.
Yeah, but that is a one time only thing, but after twenty five, so then it'll drop back up.
Yeah. The seventeen sixty four?
Uh, no, the eighteen hundred.
Oh.
That's uh built in to, um, the.
Fifty three oh one?
Yes.
Why is that one seventy six, one thousand seven sixty four in red?
It was a change.
Reduced?
Oh, the education stipends, so I'm separating out the education stipends, last year it was built into the salary line, few lines above.
Yes.
So I just made it stand out, like those two lines together would equal the line from a previous year.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Any questions on?
No.
The motion?
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department one forty one, the amount of two hundred and twenty eight dollars, two thousand, two hundred twenty eight thousand, one hundred four hundred forty one dollars and sixty nine cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Votes. One, one forty five. One forty five professional and technical, fifty three hundred. He talked about reducing this by forty, two hundred.
Right, do we have an idea of how much we've used on that, or how much has been expended?
So one forty five, they're fifty three hundred out of the sixteen thousand, they've expended seventy two hundred through the end of March.
Okay, yeah, we could cut some there.
Which line is it?
I mean, town treasurer, you guys are familiar with central office uh administrator, do you see any big costs for B I certifications or anything coming out of that office?
Um, I think he might use, I don't know, I'd be on the collector budget when he does um tax title and things, so on the collector side, I'm really not sure.
Yeah, this one, the professional and technical, it twenty four hundred is unknown, so we cut half of that. And then professional and technical, over the last few years, has generated ten thousand free cash, so we cut another three there, that was the thoughts on those.
Mm-hmm.
So that would change the professional and technical to twelve six.
Right.
And um, I don't know if anybody else has done the math on one fifteen, four seventy two. That would change the overall to one eleven, two seventy two eighty nine.
Two seventy two eighty nine?
One eleven, two seventy two eighty nine.
Any, any other questions on any of those?
Oh. The postage meter. And seventy five hundred. They wrote, how much did they use on that?
So the postage meter, okay, so there's two things going on here, they spent five thousand seven hundred and twenty five, but then they charged back to other departments, three thousand seven hundred and fifty two.
So is that net number on there?
Hmm, I need to calculate it, it's not on the scriptbook. Five seven nine two five, twenty seven, five two, a net of two thousand.
And is it the net that hits fifty three forty six in his?
Um, so as long as he runs the reports and I'm able to charge the other departments for the expenses, yes. If he doesn't run the reports and doesn't give me information, then he absorbs all of it.
Okay. And how's he been ever giving you the report?
Um, he, I can't remember exactly, maybe through like January or February was the last one.
Well, I would imagine if the funding is cut, is due by other departments and he's out of money, he's gonna go, what, so give me another report?
Yeah.
So yeah, um, if we could cut that some. What did you say, they're using actually two thousand?
Um, through the end of March, roughly two thousand.
What do you think, we come out of, is that at twenty five hundred? Or is that cutting too much?
I think that's too low.
Three thousand?
Four.
Five, four.
Oh, because the postage may increase as well.
It is gonna.
No, it is, yeah.
It is, yeah, so we're there.
Okay, so four thousand, I'll take that.
So which one?
I make uh, fifty three forty six, am I correct?
Yep.
Uh, I'm would like to make a motion that we, um, do we need a motion list for my, our recommendation?
So that would change the total to one oh seven, 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 two, eight, nine.
Okay. One oh seven, one more time, Peter.
Seven, seven, two, eight, nine.
Okay.
What was the other one we got, Mark?
Uh, votes, fifty three hundred and fifty three forty six.
Oh, only those two?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that, uh, do we have a motion?
Not yet, I'm, if everybody's done.
Yeah, is anybody else have any?
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we propose for Department one forty five, the town treasurer, an amount of one hundred seven thousand seven hundred seventy two dollars and eighty nine cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes, yes, have it. Uh, one forty six. So similarly here, we talked about professional and technical, cutting that down to a thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So that would be one oh five, six seventy two eighty nine. Any other questions on any?
I make a motion that we vote to um recommend for Department one forty six, town collector, an amount of one hundred five thousand six hundred seventy two dollars and eighty nine cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Votes, yes, have it. One fifty one. Town administrator, board of selectmen, recommending fifty five thousand.
Um, how have we done on that line out of this year?
We're getting really close, um, that is a account that's always at least a month and a half behind the billing. Um, so we're gonna be coming in close, so.
Last year did have a transfer increase as well.
Yeah, uh, I got the main last week, the B O S did talk about uh the need to increase it, but because, oh yeah, we'll just watch it and uh, and if we do have to address it again, we'll um have that ability somehow, but um, it just like we're running like so tight all around to, it's a crap shoot.
I make a motion that we vote to propose uh for Department one fifty one, town council, the amount of fifty five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes, yes, have it. Uh, one fifty five. Town administrator and board of selectmen recommending sixty five, three seventy three, fifty eight. Questions on, any thinking that?
Well, I do, what, fifty three oh five, that building permits software user fees, where did that go?
Uh, I like, we actually, uh, one of the things that had act, that actually developed, we were hoping to bring the board health into the billing permit to software as well. Um, but um, the uh, uh, the state has initiative where they're also trying to get, um, all boards of health into one, um, into one separate planning software. So until we're able to see how that's built out, uh, we're not gonna be able to assess uh the opportunity to intertwine that with the state software, so that's why that expense, we won't have, uh, based on the state software still being built out, we won't have that expense in F Y twenty five.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on one fifty five?
No, I make a motion that we vote to uh recommend to Department one fifty five, data processing, the amount of sixty five thousand three hundred seventy three dollars and fifty eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes, yes, have it. Uh, one fifty eight, same uh administrator and board of selectmen recommending fifteen thousand.
It's down from the twenty five.
Hmm, we get spent roughly ten eight through December.
Mm-hmm.
Wanna make it thirteen?
I'm making pretty good.
Yeah, to the treasurer's credit, he's, um, he have, uh, we have historically been like a little behind in moving things over into tax title, and he's been really, he's been really pushing and working to address that, so.
Yeah, that is a revenue generating expense as well as, as much as, we wanna talk about that, but.
It's nice. I make a motion, we vote to recommend uh to Department one, for Department one fifty eight, tax title foreclosure, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Votes, yes, have it. Uh, one sixty one. Town administrator and board of selectmen recommending one fifty one, four fifty one twenty. Any questions on any of those items?
Yeah, on um fifty three hundred and fifty four twenty, three thousand dollars and three thousand two hundred dollars in red on those two lines.
Um, that could just be if they submitted a revised after the initial I marked it, that's.
The thirty two, we already cut four out for, and it's down to twenty eight.
I just wanted to clarify the issue right through.
Anyone else?
No other questions, motion?
I make a motion that we vote to recommend to Department one sixty one, town clerk, the amount of one hundred fifty one thousand four hundred fifty one and twenty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Votes, yes, have it. One sixty two elections.
I have a question, did we find out what it is connected to the school?
Go ahead.
I'm not sure. Yeah, no, Mike just stepped out, you might know who he's been.
Yeah. We're gonna give them a budget, which we pay for the school.
Yeah, we own the school.
But they had said we pay, we pay for the janitor.
That's listed, but on their, um, they explain the costs.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, the cost is two. Sixty two. Yes, under fifty three hundred, it's tabulator program, ballot, school rental, janitor.
And now the piece of janitor, I want.
It doesn't, it doesn't say, um, it doesn't break down the costs, just what is included in that.
He makes thirty, maybe six thousand?
Sixty two hundred, tabulator program, so the elections. Excuse me, Mike.
Yes.
Did we find out how much the school rental is for our elections? The janitors?
No, we have not, I'm sorry.
Mike?
Yes.
In um fifty three hundred.
Yeah.
Under, on on her sheet, it says it's the tabulators?
Tabulator program.
Tabulator program, is that, is that the iPads that we just talked about?
One sixty two.
On Monday?
No, those were addition, those were additions to that, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, she, I did.
It says the tabulator program, yeah.
Yeah, I remember her saying that it's um almost like a U, a court on U S B drive, that she has to send to the state and they up, do updates and then they send it back to her.
Okay.
And then she has it before the election starts.
Okay.
Has to do with the machines and their.
The, the.
Screenware.
Machines.
Yeah, the ballot machines, yeah.
Yeah. And I know she didn't have an answer the other day. But that if she did get the iPads, she's, I'm assuming she still hasn't said how much she thinks election records would come down.
Yeah, um, probably not right away.
Okay.
Um, probably over time, I believe.
Couldn't work out the kinks for the first year, getting to iPads, yeah.
Yeah, it's part of the, there was a Capitol meeting on Monday, one of the requests that maybe coming down is some iPads that she felt we're gonna cut maybe a day and a half off of work time, time for, but, and for the dollar, not too. Totally separate than one sixty two.
Oh, so the iPads are for after the election for, no?
They would be, so she's trying to implement new, new technology for the elections in the fall. But, different discussion.
Okay.
Any other questions on one sixty two?
Is that cost of the program annual?
Yes, uh, they might even be for every election.
Right.
They still, they're updating the information on everyone.
Yeah, I think it's every. Yeah. Look at this primary and then the presidential.
And this will be the first time we're doing it?
No, they do it every year.
This one is uh software for the, the reader machines, you need to equip the ballot in.
Okay.
Alright, are we done? Everybody else there?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we vote to approve um for Department one sixty two elections, the amount of forty two thousand, five hundred and five dollars and ten cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, yes, have it. One sixty three. Town administrator and board selectmen recommending three oh two.
Also there.
Question? Go ahead.
I make the motion, we vote to approve for Department one sixty three registration, the amount of eight thousand, three hundred and two dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, yes, have it. One, one seventy. Uh, the town administrator suggested recommendation and board selectmen recommendation is sixty nine, four ninety one, sixty one.
So, any other question on fifty one fifteen? Clerical worker, increase of forty five, one seven seven percent.
Yeah, that was actually merged, um, uh, like with fifty one eleven. I mean, I'm sorry, fifty one ten and F Y twenty five, so it's really combining both of roles, so one is zero and out, and the other one is, and the other line is absorbing that.
So it's the same math, but just combined?
Essentially, yes.
Any other questions on that?
I was just kidding. That, plus that.
Oh, got it, thank you.
That's all I.
I make a motion, we vote to uh recommend for Department one seventy one, the conservation committee, the amount of sixty nine thousand, four hundred ninety one dollars and sixty one cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, yes, have it. One seventy four, uh, proposals from both administrator and board selectmen, eight hundred dollars.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department one seventy four, the diamond trail committee, the amount of eight hundred dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, yes, have it. One seventy five. We've talked about the possibility of fifty three hundred going to twelve five, a twenty five hundred dollar reduction, similar to the twenty five hundred dollar reduction in Florida.
What was that one again, the fifty three hundred professional?
Yeah, down to twelve five, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That would leave uh department total of sixty thousand, eight sixty six, ninety four.
Sixty, eight sixty six.
Ninety four cents.
That it?
Yeah.
I make the motion that we vote to recommend for Department one seventy five, the planning board, the amount of sixty thousand, eight hundred sixty six dollars and ninety four cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, yes, have it. One seventy six, the adjusted administrator and the board selectmen uh recommending thirty eight, three seventy one, eighty two. Any question? I just, doesn't matter, what does that mean?
I make the motion, we vote to recommend for Department one seventy six, the board of appeals, the amount of thirty eight thousand, three hundred seventy one dollars and eighty two cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, yes, have it. Just for clarification, one eighty nine just goes by.
Um, so one seventy nine, it's on vacation's part, um, yes, that has been transmitted and then the bridge garden is now under the parking wreck today, yeah.
Okay, so we just vote the parking wreck within parking lot.
Yeah.
One eighty nine, uh, development industrial commission. Basically, same by the society chair. Do they always go to the? Gentlemen, I remember right, the most that later on these comes up this, in the spring, um, it's in the chamber of Congress, and what was it, uh, general representative?
Right.
Yep, that's what he said. And does one eighty nine spend a million?
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department one eighty nine, development and industrial commission, the amount of one thousand dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, yes, have it. Uh, one ninety two. The administrator recommended two fifty, one forty, board of selectmen, two fifty five, one forty, and it's a five thousand dollar difference in about fifty two fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I admit that first, while I was doing my sheet, I didn't see the change that might get made, and I was, I had down, I had twenty thousand there as well, so.
Mm-hmm. I'll agree with the twenty thousand.
That would be a recommendation of the administrators, two fifty, one forty.
Mm-hmm.
Is there other questions? No.
Two fifty, one forty.
Two five oh one, fill out.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department one ninety two, public buildings and properties maintenance, uh, the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, yes, have it. One ninety five, uh both, both are recommending twenty five hundred. And that all basically comes.
This is strictly for the printing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department one ninety five, town reports, the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, yes, have it. Strictly, where was the total of general government recommendation would be, would you, would you?
So, general government income recommendations, one million, eight hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred seventy five, sorry, seven hundred seventy seven dollars and eighty five cents. And could you repeat that one more time also? Yep, one million.
Yep.
Eight nineteen.
Okay.
Seven, 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 eighty five cents.
Okay.
Thank you. Move on to public safety. Uh, we have discussed bringing fifty one thirty one down to two sixty. We talked about everywhere from two fifty up to two sixty three, and I think we, we settled at two sixty.
Sounds good.
Um great, how much have they used so far this year?
Alright, so through the end of March, five one thirty one, out of the two hundred and seventy three thousand, they use a hundred and eighty five thousand, four hundred and eleven. About sixty eight percent.
And that's through the end of March, you said?
March, which is usually seventy five percent spent.
And you said there are about sixty eight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No.
So if we're gonna have to have that extra position filled, we don't anticipate having to hit it as hard as we did through the first quarter of this year.
And even though one officer is coming back, even though it's been delayed a little?
Yeah, we do, uh, we do have, uh, two officers out right now injured, we don't have a return date, um yeah, like that's why, like, it's hard, it's hard to predict because it's, um, but, I mean, like, I do think two sixty would be doable.
Okay, I'll agree with the two sixty.
I would change, I would put the, uh, not actually, I would put it at one, one nine six nine, three two nine, seven nine, it's all on a nine.
One nine, six nine.
Three two nine.
Three two nine.
Seven nine.
Mm-hmm. Is that it?
That was all from the other night, if anybody else have any questions on me, I think.
No. I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department two ten, police department, the amount of one million, nine hundred sixty nine dollars, eight hundred twenty nine and seventy nine cents.
Second, three twenty nine?
Oh, three twenty nine, I thought you said eight. Uh, let me redo that, I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department two ten, the police department, one million, nine hundred sixty nine thousand, three hundred twenty nine dollars and seventy nine cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And post, yes, have it. Communications. Uh, board of selectmen and administrator. Recommended four twelve, eight forty one, fifty nine. Let me, uh, I'm sorry to do this. I have four lines here. Uh can we go back to two ten?
Sure.
Sorry, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Uh, we also had in two ten, in uh, two ten, in uh I believe it was fifty three hundred.
That's what my note said.
J G P R, it's the second line, so that would be reduced to four thousand. Fifty three nine ten.
Fifty three hundred. Uh, I don't understand.
They, they had a vendor, J G P R, the P R company, they had them in two different lines.
Oh.
So the one line, the line it wasn't supposed to be in professional and technical of fifty three hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So that was, um that was four thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that would reduce that line fifty three hundred to forty three nine ten. And the other question we had the other night.
Is fifty three hundred forty seven nine ten?
Forty seven nine ten, yeah, so that would reduce to forty three nine ten.
Yep.
The other question that we had the other night was, uh one fifty four eighty, it was, there was a large, large unknown.
Four two four eight.
Oh, vehicle maintenance.
The usual supply.
Can be brought down.
I have a question, we have ordered, uh, is the new cruiser in, we even have that?
The one that got totaled, so the one that totaled, we just replaced that one, and they just received it like two days ago. But is there one still?
No.
That was the one that was on back order, so I think they're up to down now.
Yeah, that was the one that was on back order, like, was still behind, so that's why honestly, if we can prioritize a cruiser with a very limited capital at the annual, um, it's been about, I think about two years since we've actually ordered one. Um, so yeah, I mean, trying to do that, in my opinion, is a priority, but it's all, I mean, it depends on just how we balance, but.
Um, it's been two years, but it, like you said, it was on back order for a long time, how is the uh supply chain now as far as cruisers go and?
It's, uh, it's better, uh, especially because we, uh, was the department, had switched over from, uh, Ford explorers to Sheri Cajos, um, and it's actually a better product as well. And the, and the turnaround time on them this quarter.
Okay, so we're talking within a year?
Yes, yes.
So, we had talked about, about bringing fifty four eighty down to sixteen, which would be in line with the last couple of years. Um, the note I have is maybe.
I'm sorry, Peter, uh, fifty four, fifty four eighty, I missed that, and bring it down to what?
Sixteen.
Yeah.
It's okay, hindsight, that might have made me think closer, but yeah, I don't.
Yeah, was it?
I do think that's doable.
Okay, so that would actually then, that would bring the total with those two changes uh, reducing fifty three hundred by four thousand, reducing fifty four eighty by five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Would bring the new total to one million, nine hundred sixty thousand, three hundred twenty nine dollars and seventy nine cents. Knew it's too many bands.
Um, in this, do, do we have to negate, negate the last vote, or? No, I just just make it.
Just amend it.
Okay.
Uh, either way, it's, that's for either way.
I'd like to amend our vote for Department two ten, and vote to recommend for the police department budget, a new amount of one million, nine hundred sixty thousand, three hundred twenty nine dollars and seventy nine cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, yes, have it. Okay, back to two fifteen. Uh, four twelve, eight forty one, fifty nine is the administrator recommendation and board of selectmen recommendations. Any questions on any of those?
Yeah, I N C software support, um, fifty three oh one, increasing by seventy six percent.
That's how much they had spent at the end of the year, at the end of December.
They spent seventy six percent of it.
So it's a two percent increase for the last year, twenty two five from twenty two.
Um, that decrease in fifty one oh six that we're looking towards twenty thousand, have they or hired another full-time employee? Well, no, they couldn't.
No, we're gonna rely, uh, we're gonna rely more on the grant, uh, to fund out part time, uh, dispatches, I would rather have a funded fee, part time operational budget.
Um, that grant.
It's recurring.
One year, oh, it is recurring.
As long as they apply every year, we traditionally have it been approved every year.
Okay.
But it is also the police department to apply for that grant every year, but we currently have thirty three thousand, if not sixty six thousand on the books right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department two fifteen, communications department, the amount of four hundred and four thousand, eight hundred forty one dollars and fifty nine cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, yes, have it. Uh, two twenty, fire department. The, uh, administrator recommending seven seventy three, seventy seven, ninety seven, and the board of selectmen, seven seventy six, two eighty seven, ninety seven. Twenty five hundred dollar difference in gas.
Mm-hmm.
Mike, you're still a bit with the. Mike, you still go with the six?
Uh, yeah, I mean, again, so, yes.
What do they spend still from?
Um.
Was it fifty four?
Fifty four eighty one.
The department two twenty, fifty four eighty one through the end of March, forty five percent. Three thousand eight hundred.
I don't know, sure.
Okay. So, forty five percent.
It's the current.
I like the six thousand.
More other questions, take a motion.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department two twenty, the Fire Department, the amount of seven hundred seventy three thousand, seven hundred eighty seven dollars and ninety seven cents.
So, oh, that goes two six, that's not reducing, okay, uh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, you guys have it? And two thirty one. The town administrator, Forest Selectmen, recommending eight twelve, eight seventy one, fifty six.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So I know the ambulance, uh, service does have its, does make money, does have revenue. Um, how does that affect this?
The revenue is added to our.
Oh, our overall revenue.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it reduces what we have to raise appropriately.
Yeah.
Well.
Not.
Indirectly, so.
Yeah.
So the revenue from the ambulance goes into a two forty special revenue fund, and we've been using, we've been taking money from that to support our budget. So in this current year, we took four.
Three, uh.
It went from three eighty eight.
To four fifty five.
To four fifty five. So we do use that revenue to supplement it, but it doesn't, it's not deposited directly into the general fund.
Okay, so we're not using all the revenue, what is the rest of that revenue used for?
So it just builds in that two forty fund.
Yes, yeah.
Do we, do we, is that an interest-bearing fund?
Not sure to be honest with you.
Just new files? Yeah, I'm not hundred percent sure, I'm only look at that one in detail. But typically, when the Fire Department has, um, capital projects and articles, they also will get the funding from the ambulance fund, okay.
Yeah, we do, um, we do have a, an ambulance fund order, um, that we.
Yeah.
That we paid, I think, three years, um, towards that.
The ambulance?
Yeah, the new ambulance that we have in, taken.
I think I, we have funded one lease payment, the hundred and forty five thousand, the fire truck.
Uh, yeah, okay, I think, by the way, we have the fire truck, not the, that came in.
Yeah, I buy.
But, um, the, yes, but the other part of the ambulance fund is, is used to fund leases for ambulance and things like that.
Um, do we have to leave a certain amount or percentage of what they're collecting in that fund?
If we had, if we had a good fund into policies, I would say yes, but we don't have fund into policies. Um, uh, we do like to see a, a good retained revenue there, though.
But there's nothing legislated, nothing, okay, thank you.
Did you sign those things?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You want to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it's just.
And, uh, so line fifty two forty under the ambulance?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm the, okay.
How far along are we on spending that?
Good night, guys, good luck.
Thanks, Peter.
Any other questions?
Yeah. The fuel?
Uh.
No, ambulance, permanent maintenance.
Well, there are repairs, six, fifty two forty.
Oh, fifty two forty, uh, oh, the twenty one thousand at the end of March, they spent about nineteen thousand, ninety percent.
And was that on the old ambulance?
Yes, they would not receive the, the new ambulance yet.
So the, I guess my thought is with a new ambulance, we should have like zero repairs.
Well.
We will still have an old ambulance as well, so, uh, like, when, uh, when we get the new ambulance, the, the current ambulance at station one, uh, like, will go down to station two. And the ambulance at station two, uh, will then go out of service and be freighted, freighted.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, but they like, uh, cycle through them to, yeah, like, so the one that's currently is the primary will drop down to a secondary, but it will still use it and have to make accompanying repairs to it.
And roughly, we, life of an ambulance, it's like five, we, we've been trying to replace roughly at about.
Every five years, yeah.
Okay.
Cool, yeah, leave.
So, so I know we've, uh, targeted eighteen thousand out of, uh, down from the twenty one. Again, I'm saying, I'm thinking, Kim, we're only far less, now we're gonna have one new ambulance and only one older.
All right, so it's twenty one, fifty two forty.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong line.
Holy, oh, God, okay. Do, any idea when the new ambulance is coming in?
No, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't.
Oh, we don't have it yet?
No.
No, we don't.
Oh, I thought we did sound it.
Fire shot from three years ago, just came in.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Um, fifty three forty on Communications is going up by thirty two point three six percent, which is exactly the same amount that went up on the two twenty. Are those Communications, ambulance, and fire?
Yeah, basically divided, like, a total, a total cost for both Fire and Ambulance Communication is then divided in half and split among both budgets, that's why they were reciprocal.
Okay.
Okay.
Everyone's up? I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department two thirty one, ambulance services, an amount of eight hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred seventy one dollars and fifty six cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, you guys have it? All right, in the. All right, I'm just gonna try and jump here, I'll stick here, two, two forty one. Uh, building inspection, administrator and board of selectmen are recommending eight one eight four six seventy thirty two.
Are we sticking with the twenty five thousand? For the, uh, I'm sorry, fifty three eighty?
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad, I mean, if he needs even thirty, he could conceivably become a reserve transfer, so.
No, Ken, this isn't ideal because we never know, but in terms of getting to a balanced budget, yeah.
Right. Now, professional and technical, um, requesting three thousand down to twelve hundred.
Yeah.
Yes, the building department does have, um, does have a planned retirement in F Y twenty five, and, um, so the department, uh, was requesting additional consulting, um, to be able to help in that transition.
Wow.
Uh, but they also have built in some overlap, um, in terms of the, um, in terms of the, like, staffing, uh, between the current employee and the new employee.
Awesome.
So, um, it just.
It should be a smoother transition.
Yeah, but there's already that overlap happening, so it, um, uh, which is why we got, having additional consulting on top of that, yeah.
All right, thank you. So with that case, I'm going to go over it, go.
Any questions on?
Okay, I make, um, proposal that we recommend for Department two forty one, the building inspection, um, the amount of one hundred eighty four thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and thirty two cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, you guys have it? These I go group. Two forty two, two forty three, two forty four, and two forty five. Uh, administrator and board of selectmen recommending in, in that same order,
Mm-hmm.
sixty seven fifty, seventy seven fifty, fifteen hundred and twenty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, got it.
Basically, as we spend this money, we're getting current money in.
I'm good. I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department two forty two, gas inspection, the amount of six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, you guys have it?
Uh, I make a proposal that we recommend for Department two forty three, um, plumbing inspection, the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, you guys have it?
And I propose, we vote to recommend for Department two forty four, weights and measures, the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, you guys have it?
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department two four five, the electrical inspection, the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, you guys have it? And then on to two ninety two. Animal control, uh, administrator and board of selectmen recommend sixty thousand fifteen dollars and forty four cents. Questions in there?
Are we supporting the twelve hundred for the professional and technical fifty three oh two?
You cut that thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
And, that twenty percent increase on the, uh, fifty three hundred.
About.
Fifty one hundred.
And about in both there?
Yes, that is based on the current, your trends, based on expenses, that's, uh, that's reflecting current actual cost, the shift. It's, you know, that's always an unknown based on the amount of animals that the E C R takes in as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, she's had a lot this year, and she expects that trend to continue, and those expenses to continue as a result.
So, uh, that department, people who adopt animals, there is a fee.
Yes.
Okay, and those collections go into?
The general fund.
Okay. Do we have an idea what that is?
Uh, one second, let me see. Um, so, for this year. Um, let me see, I missed recording, so. So as of December, it was zero. Not in the line that it's supposed to be. She had any, which I don't recall seeing any terms for adoption fees, but yeah, this, this early line is zero.
Do we have a limit on?
But, I, I don't.
No, but I think.
How do you ask this, do we limit how long we keep an animal?
I don't know how she wants that to come along.
Uh, like, I believe, I believe, so she does, but like, I'm not, like, I don't know the details there.
I, there was a Facebook post that the German Shepherd she had for more than a week.
Yeah, like, yeah, no, she still has, yeah, she still has that talk of that today, yeah.
She still had that, yeah. But I thought she wrote something like, it's been a week, so they'll be coming up for adoption soon, so I don't think she holds on too long.
Next year, those will have questions like that.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ken.
We don't even estimate any revenue for that one.
I just had an example too, I just had a dog that was abandoned, um, uh, recently, and so, um, I was with that abandoned dog, now, and, and we as a town have to pay to, oh, you know, all the vet bills associated with that and everything too, so, it does, that's the unpredictability and volatility there, and, but, it's all driving the cost to, um.
Right, for the vet, yeah.
Increase, yeah.
But then we recoup it in the adoption process?
If. If the dog, yeah, which is a big if.
I, I.
I'd really go to a rescue, but.
Yeah, I thought she worked with somebody in Fall River too, that, maybe they move on to Fall River?
When? Yeah.
Or the animal rescue.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's tell, if it's adopted, oh, do we get the revenue, but it's never guaranteed, it'll be adopted, the animal will be adopted out. So if it's moved to another town like Fall River, when it's adopted out, we don't get anything. No, no, while it's a rescue, no.
And we don't have to pay anymore?
No, no.
To feed it or anything?
Yeah, but we paid the, the, the.
Yeah.
In insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone's up?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department two ninety two, the Animal Control Officer, the amount of sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand fifteen dollars and forty four cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, you guys have it? Uh, two ninety four, both are recommending, two seventy five, eighty three.
Oh, I think my window's.
Mm-hmm.
One minute, you all in this?
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department two ninety four, Forest Street, the amount of two hundred seventy five dollars and eighty three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, you guys have it?
Do you wanna take three?
No, it's fine, I think I might roll it up or rolled it up and off, I'm not worried about it, thank you.
Uh, two ninety nine, uh, both proposing forty five hundred.
I make the motion, we vote to recommend for Department two ninety nine, emergency preparedness, the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, you guys have it?
Do you want the total for public safety?
If you could.
Yeah, four million, two hundred forty five thousand, two hundred ninety two dollars and fifty cents.
Education. The proposal fourteen nine seven thirty one, three thirty eight, forty eight.
Is there any, have you been in contact with Rehoboth, are they moving forward with the budget, or do they have any problems with the educational budget, do we?
I heard.
I never even heard.
Okay, that's a good sign.
Haven't heard them having an issue at all.
Okay. I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department three hundred, education, the amount of fourteen million, seven hundred thirty one thousand, three hundred thirty eight dollars and forty eight cents.
Second.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Post, you guys have it?
For the president, please.
Okay.
Uh, four twenty two, Forest Selectmen and Administrator recommending one eight three, four six six.
What?
Uh, or is that, oh, that's just total, so sorry, next page, seventy two.
Thank you.
Nine four three one.
Oh, wow.
Budget problem, come on.
Yeah. All right, um, sorry. I'll be okay with it.
Might have a few grievances.
Are we recommending the forty eight thousand for public works? Uh, fifty, fifty five thirty, sorry.
Aye. I believe so.
Yep, I thought we had discussed that, I think, I'm sure.
Yeah, yep.
Anybody else? I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department four two two, highways, the amount of seven hundred eighty two thousand, nine hundred fifty one dollars and eighty six cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, you guys have it? Four twenty three, fifty. Fifty year in a row, fifty thousand dollars. Yeah.
How much did we spend this year?
Ninety six, oh.
No.
No, that was last year.
That's, what, eighty eight plus fifty?
Hundred thirty eight.
Well, that's the only budget that we can legally deficit spend in, and we can't appropriate less this year than we did last year, so if you increase it, it's a permanent increase.
Yeah, you can never go back.
Right, I didn't know that. Okay. I make a motion that we vote to recommend for department four twenty-three, snow and ice control, the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, yes have it. Four twenty-nine, both both are recommending sixteen hundred.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for department four twenty-nine, the Dyke Berkeley Bridge, the amount of sixteen hundred dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, yes have it. Four thirty-two, uh, both are recommending two forty-seven, two oh six, sixty-five. With five thousand on adoption supplies and the four in, uh,
Please do choose.
detail. And the number is, uh, the, yeah, two forty-seven, two oh six.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for department four three two, street cleaning, stormwater, the amount of two hundred, was that total highways?
No, that's two forty, two forty-seven.
Yeah, two forty-seven, two hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Yes have it.
Town control for highways?
I think we matched you guys on that.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sure, okay.
Yep.
One thirty-three.
And it's limited seven eighty-three six. Based on what was discussed earlier in the evening.
Right, we're keeping it as is printed.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion that we recommend for department four thirty-three, sand, uh, waste collection and disposal, the amount of seven hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, yes have it. Uh, four thirty-five, transfer station, both had recommended one oh three, five sixty-two, forty-nine.
For the hazmat, um, fifty-two ninety-five, that's a very specific number, I mean, is that the same amount every year, or? Six forty?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure.
Shouldn't know.
The five.
Disposal for the following, electronics and tires. That's all they give us, I've stuck up for that.
Do we have, do we know what we spent on that line item for this year?
Yeah. One thirty-five, what is it, fifty-two ninety-five? Two thousand dollars.
As of March.
Multipliers.
Two thousand dollars, so there's only one part of that.
Oh, that's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that should be.
Can we cut that a little? But we've only got.
Yeah, I have to say, Tom is pretty, uh, Tom is pretty like a political and his projections, so if he's already, he's already recommending a decrease there, um, he.
Uh, probably spring cleanup too, we're talking.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, that was in close, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, he's dropped it anyway, so. Thank you. And we are sticking with the sixty-five thousand for, uh, fifty-three oh two?
Yes. Yeah, the board, um, the selectmen, two weeks ago, now make changes to the, um, to the bulky waste program where the town will no longer be accepting, um, half trailers and, um, and full trailers and half truckloads and full truckloads of, uh, just really construction debris.
Oh, yeah.
And so that has, um, driven up our energy volume, so I, so we hope.
So the steps no longer allow.
Yeah, so hopefully the savings will be more, but just conservatively, uh, we're planning anticipating at least, um, almost three thousand dollars there.
Okay. I make a make a motion, we vote to recommend for department four three five, transfer station, the amount of one hundred three thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
opposed, yes have it. And, uh, other than that, four ninety-one cemetery, uh, proposed is thirty thousand, twenty-one dollars, fifty cents, and based on the new, uh, contract basis.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for department four ninety-one cemetery, the amount of thirty thousand, twenty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
opposed, yes have it. Okay, I'm trying to remember the last time that there was a whole department that there was no
No report.
selectmen recommendation of that.
Or maybe.
That's all I would say about that.
We are hoping, um, uh, like, one of the things, um, so the, um, the selectmen are also many get next ones tonight. I'm hoping to be able to get some type of record of a board and health vote, um, to, so we can bring that back and have a, hopefully maybe a full recommendation there, and at that point also, also ask the board if they wanna try to reconcile any of the other recommendations with the Fed Com as well, just to have some better alignment.
Yeah. Yeah, even if, even if just contractual things, if you can, just approve the things you have to. But that's all I'm gonna say. Any, any questions about that, any, any lines in here?
No.
The town administrators proposed one fifty-nine seventeen and stuck to his guns.
That doesn't go to the wall when it goes to everyone.
So, uh, why would we turn that board to health, are you, are they normally three members for a full board?
Yes.
So they down one?
Yeah.
How long have they been down one?
Two and a half months.
Yeah.
Two and a half months, yeah. Out of curiosity, well, do their stipends get paid monthly?
Yes.
Ah, at the end of the year.
And I would just pro rate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just,
Yeah.
just as an FYI for anybody that's interested, if someone leaves before actively, not currently, but.
Right.
It's only a bit for you.
Because the Fed Com gets paid at the end of the year.
Oh, 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 okay.
Got it, yeah. Took me a second.
That works.
Oh, okay, I make a motion, we vote to recommend for department five-ten, the board of health, the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, yes have it. Council on Aging five forty-one, uh, administrator and board of selectmen recommend one seventy-eight, four thirty-two, twenty.
Is that office managers salary increase negotiated by the union?
Yeah, it's all contractual.
If I remember, was that when the, uh, this job description changed?
Yes.
It did, so she moved up in grade.
Yeah.
Yes.
The office supplies went up forty-five point three three, one fifty-four twenty.
And they do use grant money, um, to supplement programs and other things that they have running. Office supplies.
Uh, something happened.
Oh, the screen.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry.
I can't do that.
Yeah, they didn't rationalize the whole, um, what is it, forty-seven hundred, forty-five hundred, um, yeah, they have a bill with Lantec, the twenty-four hundred dollars per year, uh, plus almost two thousand dollars for six orders of ancient toner, hundred dollars for two cases of paper, thirty-six dollars batteries, thirty-seven dollars for a four pack of air cans, and twenty, um, twenty dollars for mailing labels. So they did break it down, I just don't have any information from that, yet I can't remember.
Based on just the last few years, the current leadership is doing a lot more than the way we were. And we had a discussion before the start of the meeting that, uh, a couple of years ago, we, we had talks with person who was running it at that point, it's about hostility that, you know, maybe this isn't gonna continue.
Right.
And, but, you know, I must think.
Someone's doing a great job.
Um, yeah, the turnaround's unreal.
Yeah, a lot more people coming in.
It's a real vibrant, just the energy, the vibrancy of the killing.
Right, the staff is big, it's a big plus there.
Amazing, yeah.
But I will, I'm gonna go on record saying I don't wanna be a lab.
I make, um, a motion that we vote to recommend for department five four one, the council on aging, the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, yes have it. Five forty-three, uh, both recommendations, one twenty-two, five-ten, eighty-one.
And the rationale for that production from what was proposed is the same rationale, um, uh, from the plumbing department, um, there's, uh, they've built an overlap because it's the same boy who, um, anticipated to retire, and, um, so we do, uh, it's only overlap, so we go back on the consulting.
And the fifty-three hundred, are we supporting the seventeen fifty instead of the twenty-two fifty?
That's, that's.
That's, yeah, that's.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for department four five four three, the veterans services, the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred ten dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, yes have it. Uh, for five forty-nine, uh, majority of the costs have been moved to the town administrators. Um, so we're just left with, uh, four fifty for professional.
Okay.
So, now four fifty, just to be clear, that would be for the commission on disability, um, uh, which is a, which is a five million dollar commission, uh, rather than the ADA coordinator.
And that's all townspeople that commission?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we vote to recommend for department five four nine, the ADA coordinator, the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, yes have it. Six ten, uh, administrator and board of selectmen, three eighteen, two oh one, twenty-seven, we get to discuss, uh, line fifty-three fifty recreation, bringing that down to five thousand. That would be three seventeen, two oh one, twenty-seven.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for department six-ten, the library, the amount of three hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred one dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, just, guys have it. Six thirty, uh, just to point out, the community garden used to be, maybe other, uh, account, now it's in. Both, both recommendations at twenty-one thousand.
For, uh, line fifty-three fifty recreational, how much has been spent out of that? I know we're coming into our busier part of the year for that department.
Fifty-three fifty?
Fifty-three fifty, yeah.
Three thousand two hundred and sixty-five. At the end of March.
Okay. I make a motion, we vote to recommend for department six-thirty parks and recreation, an amount of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, yes have it. Six ninety, the recommendations two fifty, two hundred fifty dollars.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for department six-nine, the historic, two hundred fifty dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, yes have it. Six ninety-one, now proposal, uh, the, opposed is eleven fifty.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for department six-nine one, the historical commission, the amount of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, yes have it. Six ninety-eight cable, the, uh, recommended amount is three eight eight, eight eight one, twenty-seven cents. And just as a reminder, oh, that's total cultural.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, cable is forty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty dollars, we don't want to skate it off.
That's better.
Yeah, forty-eight, two eighty, and that money is actually, would come out of the cable access, the pipeline.
Yes.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for department six-nine eight, the cable committee, the amount of forty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, yes have it. Three eighty-seven?
Yes. Eight hundred eighty-one, twenty-seven.
Come on, that's three to seven.
Three eighty-seven, eight eight one. Seven.
Seven ten, uh, maturing principal, uh, two forty-five, so this is already filled in, so they're, it's anticipated.
Oh.
Two, two forty-one.
Yeah, what can we don't have a choice? Hate to box you in.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for department seven-ten, maturing principal on long-term lift, the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars. I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department seven ten, matured principal on long-term debt, the amount of two hundred forty one thousand six hundred sixty eight dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Seven fifty one.
Yeah, I think so.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department seven five one, interest on long-term debt. The amount of one hundred nine thousand four hundred twenty five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Eight twenty.
They don't have any interest, I'm gonna give sorry.
Yeah.
Um Yeah, those, the two assessment lines, the county and state, I made a recommendation with the board of selectmen to have their recommendation mirror the cherry sheet, because that's where the number is coming from.
Yeah.
And it it's a bit, you know, it's gonna change again.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get it.
Everybody hit that.
The cherry sheets will only come out after the, uh, state votes. I mean, they're giving them now. Yeah, it is, uh.
They're always still, yeah.
It's gone to the House and then there's um, one or two more?
Uh, yeah, it's possible to go through the Senate, so there will be an updated one based on that. And then there'll be an updated one based on the conference committee as well, so two more, yeah.
Right, just two more. Okay.
So that would be thirty twenty, that's fifty one, nine thirty two right now, fifty thirty, one twenty four, two twenty one.
Okay, I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department eight twenty, State Assessments and Charges, the amount of eighty one thousand nine hundred thirty two dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department eight thirty, County Assessments and Charges, the amount of one hundred twenty four thousand two hundred twenty one dollars.
Oh, excuse me, that's, yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. And nine eleven, the same, it's just a number that they try, they give us.
You have no choice. I make a recommendation that we vote to approve for Department nine one one. Uh, Retirement and Pension Contributions, the amount of one million one hundred nine thousand four hundred sixty eight dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it.
Hopefully in a few years when it's fully funded, it'll drop it down. Never know.
It's, uh, right now they're projecting twenty thirty four, it's gonna be fully funded?
Is, yeah, it's probably, every retirement system is different, but that sounds like.
Uh, nine fourteen, we had talked about possibly lowering this sum for the cushion, I think we said fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand, yeah.
So that would be one, three, five, five, three, four, eight?
One, three, five, five.
Three, four, eight. Um, let the, the treasurer's in charge of this line and they build in a couple of extra family plans for the, for the open enrollment plans or do, do anybody with that life change? Uh, but just fifteen thousand would cut some of that cushion back, but still leave that in some. Let's see another total question.
Well, I I would bring it down to about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, I believe. I would just put in a question of one forty, uh, it would drop it down to one twenty five.
Uh, six family plans, something like that.
So you still have one hundred twenty five thousand.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And if they plan to hire two in the police department?
One, police department, because one's already there.
One is already there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, so it's one, it's one, I have one new employee, um, and then I have room for qualifying events. Uh, like in open enrollment as well.
Now, they have a different price for, uh, a couple and then a couple with children?
No, it goes from straight single into family.
And just more spouses, family.
That's family.
There's no plus one.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the actual that question's been asked a lot, um, the, and what, uh, and what the actuarial, actuarial analysis has found is if, if to do that, it would actually jack up the family plan cost even more, um. I forget exactly how that would happen, but that would
They're offsetting it with the singles.
Uh, yeah, yeah, that was a rationale, so. That question has been asked a lot, though.
Yeah, sometimes you see them with, you know, single, uh, plus one, two-person, and then family. Different rates, but if you've got a large pool of single.
Yeah.
Um, they're kind of carrying it for the plus one. And plus one could be plus ten.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department nine fourteen, Group Health Insurance, the amount of one million three hundred and fifty five thousand three hundred and forty eight dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Nine fifteen, we talked about cutting five hundred dollars here. It's been understated.
That's something to do.
Does, you can't.
Another one?
Lock it down to a thousand, like?
No, I mean, uh, knock down fifteen.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I think he was good.
Fifteen's good?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department nine one five, Group Life Insurance, the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Uh, nine sixteen, the, uh, proposed amount, the recommended amount is ninety five thousand. And the increase here at the seven percent is based on the fact that the town's using more overtime. Than they had in the past, and that's why it's been, last fall, we had a meeting for transfer from the prior year.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department nine sixteen, Employer Contributions, the amount of ninety five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Nine nineteen. Recommended amount is thirty five thousand, we've been trying to do thirty five thousand basically every year since I don't even remember when we started, but they have a thirty five and generally try to do more in special account meeting, but
I make a motion. We vote to recommend for Department nine nineteen, open up thirty five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. And nine twenty. Uh, and that's just an increase based on expected, uh, expected employee tuition.
Do we have a number on that? How much do we use this for? It's, it's contractual within public safety. Is it public safety to offer this, that's funded?
Okay.
Yeah, can we do expect, um, uh, can we do it for two additional employees to, um, who by indicated, um, after two from the Public Union and one from the Fire Department, you're planning to take, you're planning to utilize that or request utilization of it?
So how does that work? In the contract, it says we will give nine thousand dollars towards
No, up to three thousand dollars per, yeah.
Per person.
Per person, so there is no limit to how many people?
But it's based on appropriation too, and so that's why we have to know in advance who is hoping, who is anticipating utilizing it.
Okay, so we're anticipating three?
Yes.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department nine twenty, Tuition, the amount of nine thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, our numbers already filled in there, one point one, oh nine.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
Uh, so it's actually two million, six hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixteen.
Nine forty five liability insurance, uh, two fifty one six a week.
Mm-hmm, I make a motion that we vote to recommend for Department nine forty five, Liability Insurance, the amount of two hundred fifty one thousand six hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it.
Do you want that total?
Yes, please.
Sure, twenty seven million, zero five seven, seven one two, fifty eight cents.
I was looking at the board of selectmen, I'm getting so excited, jeez.
No.
Yeah, I didn't say that. Someone
That's, that's what I
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with you.
And then the sewer enterprise ones.
So six hundred, and this is, we're not appropriating anybody to this, this is just a line that they spend their money.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend for Department six hundred, the Sewer Enterprise Fund, the amount of
It's three ninety two.
Three hundred ninety two thousand two hundred thirty dollars and seventeen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it.
Okay, so our levy limit is negative one hundred seventy five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Based on
Plus the forty?
No, so that's based on all of your recommendations you just did.
Okay, and what rank am I to do it?
Sure, one hundred seventy five thousand.
Yep.
Two hundred seventy eight dollars and seventy eight cents, thank you.
And will that pull that from the reserve fund?
Free cash.
Free cash, plus an additional forty thousand.
So two fifty. Two fifty, two eighty, two fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
And where were we when we started this process?
Two hundred and twenty five thousand negative.
Plus the forty, so you're saying five.
Yep.
So, yeah, we got there, we got
Two fifteen.
Walked off.
So free cash. Two fifteen. Are we still meeting as well?
Yeah, like I do think it would be a quicker meeting, uh, just to consider the, uh, one articles for capital. Um, that the Slipman will be considering Wednesday night, um. I mean, obviously, like, based on, uh, funding capacities, our options will be limited, um, but, uh, in terms of, I just see, uh, we do have a lot of, uh, capital requests, there's a question about whether the board of Slipman will put all the one articles on or only put the one articles on the one that have the ability to be funded. Um, because if we did all of them, uh, we'd ride ourselves into a bigger deficit, um, so, but, um, so uh, you know, I'll do like an article request right now for, um, a new police cruiser, um, a a highway department excavator, highway department dump truck, um, the, uh, hold on a second.
Phone system, phone system.
Huh? Uh, yeah, like, hey, the phone system, uh, that's E nine one one compatible for the elementary and middle school. Uh, uh, what if we're gonna try to do on that, that's a thirty two thousand, almost thirty three thousand dollar article. Like, we do have someone in Opera, in our, in our Opera lot event, and I've been, uh, paying telephone tag with Bristol County, uh, because we're also advancing those, uh, 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 getting our funding over there. And I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity to apply, um, that thirty two thousand dollars to our Opera, to our Opera obligation or available funding, so we don't have to fund it from free cash. Um, that is in progress, uh, but on the flip side, uh, what that would offset is originally we were hoping to, actually the police, uh, station, they need act, uh, actually new interview from, in a lockup, uh, camera and recording system, we had initially hoped to apply that to Opera, um. Uh, that application, uh, wasn't accepted based on the outdoor requirements, so now we have a need to fund that from free cash, and, but if we can offset the phone system over, uh, into our available, our funding, it just, you know, it takes the pressure off free cash, so, uh, those are the kind of things we're trying to do. Uh, the other thing, um, with regards to the phone system, actually, because we have a real, um, I'll, I'll have a more, a more urgent need for that, uh, also looking at the potential, uh, because it's now after May first, I have to do a reserve fund transfer in the, huh, I'm sorry, no, to do a departmental transfer in the, in the current year's budget. Um, to, uh, to do that, um, so the police department can be going on that project now. And it will also take the pressure, I, uh, I'm sorry, that's been in my head, I'm sorry. Um, that will take the pressure off of, uh, of free cash, I could, will, um, I could, will make less free cash available. Uh, like at the end of February twenty four, but those are all the things we're just trying to balance out as we speak, so. So more to come, but those are the type of things I think, I think it'll be a faster meeting than tonight next week.
Uh, Thursday.
Thursday, if that's okay with everybody?
Yep.
I'm gonna be in Virginia for my daughter's graduation.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The youngest.
The youngest?
The youngest.
The last.
That's kind of off the budget sheet.
Liberty University, no.
I'm so excited. We're all excited. It's two years early, too.
Oh, nice.
In all terms of, uh, night force and come up to a brother.
Awesome.
Two, two graduations, same here.
That's awesome.
So that, next Thursday would be the last main fires to town meeting. Um, before town meeting, we typically will be an hour, so half hour, half hour before. Just for any who sends, it's time to get down. Um, the moderator also might request people to come around May thirtieth, which he wants to have a gonna meet, meet the finance committee meeting.
I think we have to.
We'll, we'll have it. So that way, for the
What's the date of town meeting?
June tenth.
June tenth, I'll be back. No problem.
So six o'clock for your next Thursday?
Six o'clock Thursday. It's possible, I can zoom, but might not be
Yeah, like, we'll have it available if it's
We don't wanna be talking about this.
Alright.
Do you, uh, I can, I can forward, I can forward you, but I have, or it might be better just to wait until because they don't put everything on.
Yeah.
But typically we wait on that because, yeah, happens, I don't have that going on, then we didn't spend the time talking about it. But if that's, anybody else has, doesn't have, anybody else says anything?
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, have it.
Five fifty four.
Thanks, my inspirations, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.